The August 12th, 2024 meeting of the Wissam City Council, not under order, roll call Ted.
Ted.
Pam.
Yes Devon.
We will open the regular session for the Board of Business. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Yeah.
Uh, motion by Ted, second by Devon, roll call vote Ted.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes Devon.
Agenda has been approved as printed. Um, Deputy Sheriff would like to review the report. Come on up here.
Yes ma'am. For July, you have thirty-two documented business checks, thirty-two patrol sessions, one council meeting, one part check, and then one wanted person check for calls for service. You have two medicals, um, in which Deputy assisted EMS, and then one missing person. Apparently the juvenile was located and picked up by the mother, and then one theft, which is an ongoing investigation pending.
Is that the one from last month, please?
Yeah.
Because didn't we have the last one?
This would like to be the office. Your question is, please. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you so much. If you want to do... Alright, please review the minutes of the July 8th, 2024 listening to the council meeting. After reviewing, uh, please indicate if you have any edits. And then if there are none, the chair will entertain a motion and second to approve the minutes.
Austin.
Good thing you got left.
What do you want to add that you once reversed at the end of that note?
Where at?
Where it said John Frye, his address.
That was in the text. What do you want to add? Um, people like to improve.
He too. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Sir, second.
I'll second.
Second by Pam. So there's the motion and a second to approve the minutes as well. Edit. Edit number John Frye. Uh, roll call vote Ted.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes Devon.
Yeah.
Minutes of the July 8th, 2024 meeting and approved as printed. Please review the financial report for July, and after reviewing, if you have any questions, please ask. And then the chair will entertain a motion and a second to approve the financial report.
Those CDs, they'll just turn over automatic or do what?
Yeah, if I don't do anything else, so.
Just do, two of us do the smartest. I might motion to approve the finance, our financial.
I second. Then Ted made a motion, second by Devon, to approve the financial report for July. Roll call vote Ted.
Yes.
Pam.
Yes Devon.
Financial report for July is then approved as printed. Please review the bills for July. Did Chapi's estimate bill command is equal to the estimate?
Is it cheaper?
Cheaper? Good.
What law are they appearing to do? What law are they appearing to?
Are those persons doing it?
She do to it.
Yes. They need money to be right.
I have to do two, I don't know where to hit it. It's running faster, bigger screen. It's not a difference.
Yeah.
You don't have to say it, and you have two screens.
I'm going to motion through.
Devon made a motion to approve the bills listed for July. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, second by Pam, roll call vote Craig.
Yeah.
Ted.
Yeah.
Pam.
Yes Devon.
Bills for July is approved as printed. Residents concerned?
Uh.
Please stand and state your name and address.
My name is Molly Baker. I live at two of my Washington Street at Wissam, Iowa. Um, you guys paid to have the tile fixed at my property because it has been broke for over forty years. I need to state that because for some reason there has been confusion about that tile. I've owned the property for twenty, June put the property there. The tile got broke. The tree was planted, okay? The tile's been broke. They thought they had a water line break. Um, when John Frye was the water man, came over, turned all my water off, come to find out it was a tile. It was the tile that was broke. It's been broke. So it was fixed. I still have a river going down my backyard, and I still have a hole that we filled that is back again with water shooting out of it every time it rains, hard rain. Now, if the tile's fixed, I shouldn't have that hole or that problem. Also, when the city ran water lines, they did not put my sewer line back together. However, I did not know this until we just had Chapi run cameras down. It is broke in the city, or in the street at the curve, and it is not together exactly where Tiffany Ives was broke, exactly where the water people broke it. However, I did not know any of this for the last nine years, and I've been paying Tom Davis to come out and blow my pipes to get the mud that's been seeping in. Then we moved, and it's been empty for eight years. So here's the problem. I have video showing that the pipe is not together. It is exact line of where our water lines were placed. Exactly. It's not a tree thing, and it is broken street. That was all supposed to be replaced, from my understanding. So here we are, and I have no idea. I have a torn up yard full of tile. I have water still there. Of course, it's dried up over the last week. Um, but there's no way the water isn't going to run down my yard because it's nothing but a heap of mud and broken tile. So if any of you guys had that happen to your yard, I'm going to tell you right now, none of you would be happy at all. The water that was sitting there was almost much better than what we have to deal with now because now we have a huge mud mess, and still the guys are in my yard. Due to financial reasons, and you all know why, because my kids were in a car accident, we cannot move that trailer to have whatever done needs to be done, but it needs to be done so I can live there. So this is not my problem. This was a tile that was broke forty years ago, but nobody knows anything because everyone's dead now. So here we are, a tile that was supposed to be fixed. I still have running water. Yes, I understand it's supposed to reroute. However, like, it's still the same route that the water's been running. There's no new route.
And I'm here to second that.
And we have video, and my husband can still stick his whole arm down the hole that's been there for the last twenty years.
I'm her husband. My name's Travis Brand. I live over on, uh, Washington Street where the tile's broke. And, uh, uh, where, where it seems like they stopped about ten feet away from where the tile's actually broke. Um, so I have video of the geyser kind of, you can see water pushing up out of the ground. And also of the trailer. I don't know if it's coming up out of the ground and pushing out under the trailer and then out of the trailer, but you can clearly see foot. I mean, I have a video showing.
And anytime it rains, feel free to walk through my yard. I mean, any of you can come look at the mess. Any of you are more than welcome to see if you would be happy if that was your yard, honestly.
Well, it's definitely a situation and, uh...
I get the willow tree's a problem. I've been hearing it for the last twenty years.
Um, we just moved in there, and I fixed all the plumbing, right? So I dug up the plumbing that's existing, that's laid there before, um, like where the toilet connects to the ground. So I replaced all that, um, and it's fixed to the trailer, right? So, uh, when that ground's wet, they're on that one side, it, it's going to make that trailer, um, settle over time, which is going to break all the plumbing that I just replaced. And on top of that, um, it's leaning toward the gas, and it's, it's just going to keep leaning farther and farther. So it's kind of disastrous. I can't really add on to it. I can't fix the trailer. I can't.
I'm going to look back to that.
I can't even think about what I want to do next to that property weight. It really needs to be fixed, right? I know the town spent, uh, close to nine grand.
From whatever their bill was.
And I don't think that's acceptable the way it's been lived either, so. It's a mess, and there's a lot of clay, tile, um, spread all over, which I don't really care about because I'm, I'm a hard worker. I'll clean it up, but I'd really like for that tile to be not a problem. Let's leave it there.
We dug it back. That third word was filed. It's clear. New P. threw up underneath the trailer for that tile, I don't know.
Well, I got video.
We had a new solid tile paired third street.
From where to the street? From eight, nine, or twelve feet from where it was broke to the street?
It's already big, isn't it?
Yeah, that's twelve feet from the geyser that's pushing.
It, it's, uh, it's, you guys were like ten, twelve feet away where you stopped putting tile. And, and the geyser that pushes out the ground, which I can put my whole arm up to my elbow now. Now, especially after they, they've done that, it's pushed up all the soil, so now it's just rock. So I was able to just pull a couple of rocks off the tile, and it did the rest for me, and I can shove my arm. And this is at, this is a week after they fixed it. So, and I have video of the, the yard completely flooded after it's been both the fix.
See, I'm no good at this stuff.
And I...
What the city's responsible for, what the homeowner's responsible for.
Okay, so I also talked to an attorney, and because the water line company came through and didn't put my sewer line together, that's not my responsibility. You guys paid for Tiffany's. It's not my responsibility. I have the video for the inside of my pipe.
People get back on that wire.
Well, it's good to let Chapi know about it now before it gets too far down the road too. But they fixed it.
They not, not sewer line. We fixed that tile in the third.
So the sewer line was cut back when we had, the new water line went in?
Twelve years ago.
I guess.
Yeah, I know.
So.
And we just dug up something and we knew the sewer line was busted, and we didn't fix it? I'm just asking.
I...
I'm not, what do you?
I don't know. I think we're not about the sewer line.
Yeah, she stood right out there with Chapi, and Chapi told you I had a video of my sewer line, and it was exactly where Jason's was.
He says, "I'll get back in."
I have the camera. I have, I have, I have the video. Yes, I have it. Who Chapi told you, I video.
No, I didn't. You told me, you go along and review it.
We paid for it. We have the video.
I have it, and I, I honestly, I, I, I was willing to even pay for it until I found it was split apart and talked to Jason and Tiffany, and they had broke theirs too. I haven't been there for eight years.
I think that's a bit, some sewer lines.
Alright, well... So, we'll, um, take this up a bit later.
Sure, yeah.
Because we don't know for sure what we're talking about or anything. Um, are there any other residents concerned?
Well, it's absolutely garbage. We can't afford a new yard.
Hold on, hang on. Yes?
I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, we continue to do our bike ride every night with the dog, and, uh, I think, uh, everything looks great around town, I guess, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, you know, we go through State Center and some of these other towns, and I could point out numerous places that are way, way worse off than this town is, so I just appreciate everybody and everything everybody's done, and... Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other residents concerned? Okay, um, we'll move on to alternatives. We can't do the union library contract because Christie doesn't have the contract. Uh, we can look at the twenty-eight agreement between the Conrad Public Library and the City of Wissam. And you have a copy of that. What's the cost by eighteen?
For this year, it's eighteen.
Sixty-nine, seventeen.
Right. Oh, I see. Three, number eight. Um, she's presenting it. Pete presenting it to her one tonight. Um, one thing I did put in here, and I don't know how long I wanted to do it. My first stop was ten years, and then I'm like, well, maybe just want to do a confirmation, and it'd be the party's part. Union does theirs every year because they think the population of the town is going to change, but it doesn't change officially but once every ten years. I can't get more to do, let's just go from at least a five year, but sure.
So you went to three ten?
So this one we can do three ten, if you want to do a three ten. Or as long as you want to do it. I, I left that one for you guys to decide.
That ten years under number five is happening.
Right.
So it's a thousand eight hundred sixty-nine, seventeen for the first year, a three percent increase each of the four years. Then Christie has, uh, at this point, uh, it goes through two thirty and a half thirty-four. What are your thoughts?
I'm going to give it four five in the last, yeah. Well, we're kind of, we're just, you're what you're doing. Because neither Sue nor I need to worry about it, so I kind of, so we're just going to... Read the...
I'll see if the problem then tells terminated because I'm, should be done when you want. What's the point?
Well, did you talk, did you talk about Albion was a lot more than one?
Yeah, right. When they started talking building, they're rebuilding, they wanted five right at the top. And yes, the city probably wasn't paying them, uh, quite a lot at the time, but that was a big jump.
So you're suggesting we just take that twenty, uh, thirty-four out of there and just till, till the contract runs out?
Or terminated.
Terminated if we want, so the dates of the plans, what they'd like, but what's the point?
Someone budgeted time to come down and come decide if you want to continue doing it.
So can we book on this? Do you have to redo it?
No, that's what I had. Oh, interesting.
Termination.
So twenty, through twenty thirteen?
No, I had to termination.
Be effective July first, twenty twenty.
On six.
Oh, I see. I see. We need to speak that up.
I don't have a rule. I don't know such a thing. That that was early. That didn't exist.
Alright, is there a motion to approve the twenty-eight agreement between Conrad Public Library and the City of Wissam? Motion by Devon is our second. Pam, second. Uh, roll call vote Craig.
Yeah.
Devon.
Yeah.
Pam.
Yes Devon.
Yeah.
Motion carried. Twenty-eight agreement between Conrad and John Frye and this. Uh, nuisances.
I don't know many of the things that we're working on.
Anybody have anything to bring up on nuisances?
You said we're waiting on a lawyer for this thing. We got a ton of them.
Next being, the next being will be all. Anybody else have anything?
Is garbage considered nuisance?
It's all the way on the deck.
Well, we have some properties that have already, they're sitting outside with a naked and a trailer sitting beside their house.
They have heavy weeds.
After they get a litter or...
No, so it's a nuisance.
Will it have so long after you get a litter, right?
Well, yeah, they get some really nice.
And maybe we can help them put that in her water, the water bowl with the litter. Please, uh...
Pick up your...
Yeah, please.
Well, according to the ordinance, it's just supposed to have no furniture, so.
Can I, can I put that on? Any more on nuisance? Uh, you have just... Resolution twenty-four dash nine. Okay. Uh, to increase the hourly rate for cleaning.
Yeah, the last month, but we need to do a reservation.
Resolution, so the resolution is to increase hourly rate, we need to add over twenty dollars.
Second, second line needs to say that instead of two, we're probably... See what's there. Okay.
Where?
On the second line. Where is the second list of items, point seven, point two, maintain.
Alright, is there a motion to approve revolutions twenty-four dash oh nine, increase hourly?
Yeah.
Motion?
Second.
Motion second. Roll call vote Craig.
Yes.
No, Craig.
Yes.
Pam. Alright, done. Increase credit card.
Currently, the credit card limit, which I thought was set at two thousand dollars for each card, is only two thousand dollars in the whole account. We've had a couple instances lately where everything's gone up, and if I order envelopes, I usually go to two boxes and makes a thousand dollars, save it on postage, which keeps going up, and that alone's only a thousand dollars. So if I try, I need to go buy, when there's supplies or something breaks down, and someone needs to go pick the repair parts, then we grant them to, oh, we can't do that because we don't have enough money.
So what happened in the building with people having, like, on the books?
It's like he goes, um, I can't buy envelopes that way. And then usually it's repair cars and anymore.
So where did my van go? Was that at?
Post office. They're staying much longer. They're pre-staying for three.
They won't, they don't accept like the city to pay for that?
No.
So do we have any way of doing it separate? Like, you have two thousand, and he has two thousand? Or does it have each have a thousand? Go together?
Well, they, they have to change. I understood. I don't, and keep the same cards? I don't know. I was just going to raise.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah, that's what she's asking, but I think she was setting accounts. I think it's, and if the fire department went to raise their card, which now it missed it in years, but... They're on that same person. They're on the same account. We each have our own account numbers.
So the stuff, like, that was fine, is that that can't be built in the city?
For taxes.
An arsenal built through the city?
It's too big. There were too many people. Maybe if you went to Thompson, True Valley, you might be able to get a little better.
Um, I bet they're, they could just pay for it with a card, then take their speed.
So what are you wanting out to?
I had to prove. I was just going to say.
Yep.
Four. You get another ten years, and you get five just to keep buying the city and stuff, but... Well, and yeah, you could have to start buying gas, so.
That's because the ashes.
Let's at least go to four.
Tell me about it.
Yeah, I know. I have water.
I heard you.
Tell me about it.
So, are they done? Keep the gas down there now?
So four is probably twenty thousand, three fifty.
Can you stay down?
Twenty thousand, redo it.
So at least four thousand.
You're going to bump that down here.
Oh.
Drop the lead.
Yeah, let's finish this. So, yeah.
I would like to see if we can get separate limits.
Do what?
Separate limits on each card.
Why?
Just a little bit more control. I don't know. I, I just...
But you got to turn her receipt in every time you pick up.
After the fact, yeah.
You got, she knows where the money's going when you turn her receipt in. She gets it every week.
So isn't there something about five hundred dollars? We can spend up to five hundred dollars without the approval of the council?
For non, non-normal things, like stamps or those envelopes or any normal operating thing. The fuel's going to be a little operating, and sometimes those bills are five hundred bucks. I can see what they say about doing... A thousand, well, I said that, at least a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty, so...
It's not just getting what's on, it comes up here, like, um... Everything has on...
Actually, maybe the summer was just kind of a fluke because I needed stamps and the trees were purchased and the water heater was down and the safety got fixed and, you know, we had a mower repair and kind of a rainstorm form type thing too, all in a couple months, so...
From over there, that was through news.
I thought we had water.
No, it was like that, you know, the little stuff that you get, that's, uh... Don't wait for me.
I mean, I guess...
Think about it, I can find out about that, there, we didn't talk about it in October. And then the next one, we're gonna do it then.
Okay, so it's on hold till October? All right, um, review of the twenty-twenty fours.
Um, I just gave you the report, really required review to you, it's almost the same thing basically, it's in the, they have a report when you get it, hopefully next month. We didn't make noise, I think we had it too. It's just for you to look over, just how much funds we got from the state. What was, we were spent on. It's not very exciting, but... It's a lot easier than it would be before.
Any questions on the street report? Move good on that? Um, at the last minute meeting after the meeting, we talked a little bit about maybe changing the start time of meetings to six P M. So if we run into a long meeting, we're not so late.
We'll have quite a few meetings we ought to make if we do that, throughout the summers and stuff, personally. Send more parents a meeting. Just some kids.
I'm feeling the way they look, that way, I enjoy it.
Really, really now.
Could we at least move the September meeting to six P M? Because it's going to be very long with the attorney.
I'm okay, well, it's all, that's fine, but just ready for the, for the first day.
Can we do the winter meeting at six?
I would rather not, but that's not, I'm not the only one, I'm not the only one on this council.
Do we go to six thirty? Can you make six thirty meeting?
Uh, we're in the winter, though.
Well, I'm guessing he's got basketball kids.
I don't lie, I'm wrong.
Okay, can we, can we do the next, the September meeting at six, does that agree with us?
How about month by month, if something else comes up, it's...
Can we do that? All right, so the... Okay. Uh, September meeting will be at six P M, the attorney will be here, it will be, I'll wait. There's a lot to do. I don't think we have a motion for that.
Do we have a Saturday meeting or a special meeting or a...
Uh, I picked up on, um, minutes from last meeting. Is, do we need to do anything about mosquito spraying, is that all okay?
I have, I have almost a day of the garden.
I know, but it's not gonna do any good if that tree's so, I don't know, I have one.
Unless we can trade it for fly spray.
Does anybody, does anybody, I'm, I'm...
I'm done for that.
Does anybody know anything about the car show, how it went?
Yeah. Um, I believe it was like somewhere around six thousand and I'm not sure how that's going, I don't know if Fox presented a check to Jordan. Yet or not, I know they were supposed to get together yesterday, but neither I or Jordan or were available yesterday.
Yeah, is that money being split between fire and the...
As far as I'm, I'm seeing it.
That's really wonderful, and I, I think it's really, um, great that, that, that people organized this and how much money they raised. As you think about how that six thousand dollars might be spent, I'm gonna put in a plug for Hank's machine. If he's listening. I said, as you're thinking about how that six thousand dollars might be spent, I'm gonna put in a plug for Hank's machine.
We already did.
Oh, you did?
We're ahead of you.
Okay. Hank!
The Lucas device, because we've been looking, we've been looking at one before. We've been looking at them for a while, they're just extremely expensive, so...
We know that, and I was thinking that's why this money might be a good seed money for that device.
That is the plan, yes.
Good. Hank, you hear that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Was that... Uh, three fourths. Lance, do you have a fire department report? Lance? Do you have a fire department report?
Business as usual.
Um, Malina, do you have a first responder report?
Business, we're supposed to get that money and then discuss what happened with the other, not...
Okay. Uh, James and Alice? Oh, we have to circle back to that. Uh, Parks, anything?
What is the key to?
Me, okay, said, tell us about the community building, you were here when the guy just came to the top house for it.
We're just gonna, we got, uh, electricians, we got a little more lights and fans and vents are gonna take around them and we're supposed to be there putting three-quarters of vent or stuff on there that's supposed to really help dampen the sound. And I, I was thinking maybe there's even starting this week.
Well, I was hoping they wanted it, then the guy says, well, let's do it the nineteenth, and when I called Hopkins, my, it's like, uh, I just have to wait longer for the lights to come back up, because we have somebody in there the twenty fifth. And, so now we've got to find a new tenant.
So it means September?
September's kind of busy, so I haven't looked for sure, it's between, I don't think there's anything between Labor Day and then the first wedding, there's a wedding before the OJ wedding, so...
So does it, you're gonna get done this?
No.
So tell us, so the lights come down, or it happens here?
Electricians will, they'll take the lights...
Oh, they're gonna take them completely?
Completely down and then they...
And then they're gonna spray?
Spray and then they'll come back and...
And how long do, do they use for a new day?
Um, or two, or three.
It's gonna take two days to spray them, then a day to clean them. Maybe a day to prep.
Then that's the set, and they're gonna get some fans in here running, get the air circulating, and get it to dry.
So it'll take then, then the next week, they come back to?
Ten days.
Oh, they, they said it'd take ten days to cure.
Ten days to cure.
Sure, and then they put the lights back?
Put the lights back up, the fans or the heat runs are gonna spray around and then they're gonna level it down.
The heat, the?
That's it.
No, no.
Bolo, yeah, and that.
They're gonna level it down.
So is this the time we do something about that fan?
Yeah.
How old are these fans?
But...
They're not that old.
Well, you have someone who's got them wrong.
They're from this...
Wouldn't you say ten days to cure?
Yeah, they'll be ten days, so it's like three days for the spray, ten days to cure, and then it takes, well, it takes some electricians and two days to clean them down. And then two to back up.
Do we already need to take stuff out of this room?
They said they was gonna, just some pictures, they, they...
It'd be the wall block. And then that stuff.
No, they're, like, the, 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 joke ages, don't cover.
So make sure we're good later.
They'll cover everything.
Thought they had covered it all.
I don't know. Well, all I made more of the rest of it was doing it now. Well, they talked like they had the stuff on order and, and was gonna come in and, so there you go.
Yeah, I was hoping they started...
Subject to a contractor and whatever he got to do was...
Where's this guy come out of?
I'm not sure.
Hank.
Hank? And they spray that stuff on, is that how it is?
Spray it off.
They cover the floor, then?
Yeah, they cover the floor and they cover the wall.
Oh, they cover the wall.
Yeah.
Oh, so that's gonna take a good time.
That's what he said, it's a bit of a prep.
Two days to spray it and then...
Then they gotta go back, clean up.
Cleaned up.
And let it?
Let it cure for ten days.
Eight, ten days.
Oh, okay.
First Saturday of October will be the superstar, so...
I'm hoping there's enough days between Labor Day and Labor Day, that would be nice for this test.
Yeah.
Very good test.
Uh, general, you told me that water goes off, did?
We got one.
I think that was, that one, the phone, the phone.
As far as the general goes, we didn't talk anything about that culprit up there in State Washington?
It's fixed.
Will you put a plate over it?
Yeah.
Are we going to actually fix it?
It's fixed, it's all well and good.
It's all tied. Have you looked at it?
I know, I saw the plate, looked like it bolted on or something.
You can break it out there.
I didn't say you could break it out there, I just wondered if we were actually fixing it, like, or replacing it, that's all. Just curious.
Uh, sanitation. Your report.
The report for June, the total D C was three hundred and seventy-three thousand gallons, averaging twelve thousand gallons per day, that's water. Uh, waste water total was one million eight hundred and sixty thousand gallons, averaging six hundred and twenty thousand gallons per day. We had three point eight inches of rain for June.
Okay, is that six hundred and twenty thousand or six two thousand?
Well, I would say it's six hundred.
Bar, bar, decimal for the commas in the...
Gotcha, gotcha. What did, how much?
What's that?
Sixty-two thousand.
Oh, sixty-two thousand, I forgot.
I think it's, no, I think it's, it'd have to be per day, so do you think it's sixty-two thousand or six hundred and...
Sixty-two thousand.
Times two, it costs a lot of money.
Yeah, across offices. All right.
She's like that.
Anything on public safety? Okay, unanswered, so, unanswered, uh, residents concerned. Okay, we have to circle back to this, uh, situation.
Losers?
And I don't know if, I'm not, I don't know enough about this to, what, how this, what has to be done.
I don't know, I will turn it around and draw.
I have too many videos that are explaining it all.
We have a few videos, because this is just...
Well, I mean, what's the city responsible for?
Okay, the tile, and it's what the city broke eight years ago, as y'all were...
There's a tile that cuts directly through their property, it's a city tile that goes through their property, the house is directly over the tile. There's a break in the tile directly under the house, causing a geyser of water every time it rains, making a big mess when they did a bunch of repairs.
The city did not break that tile underneath their house.
It doesn't matter who broke it, we're not playing, the city infrastructure is damaged. It is directly under the, the...
I forgot the word.
Okay, Paul, I'll, I'll, I know, and we don't have to have an argument about it, okay, all I know is that Shopee's been...
Stop everybody, Chris, but...
If it is this street sewer, there's that tile line that runs from point A to point B, that will be little point B, then that would still be the city's, then, and then to fix where the sewer line, their service line was cut when the water line went in, that is the city's responsibility. So that needs fixed.
And I would say that...
The other, we just need, get a copy of this video, review it, go back up there when it rains again, and see.
So we know where point A is, we don't, we think it is, we're not sure where it really starts, point A may not be here somewhere.
I think, yeah, I don't know.
I don't know who broke it, nor do I care, nobody here knows who broke it because that happened forty years ago, nobody here knows who broke it. It's been broke for forty years.
And it's irrelevant.
It really is.
We were trying to do out in front of your house was fix that, so now if more of it needs fixed, then we'll try to all discuss it and do what is...
That's fine, and I was, but I was under the impression when Darwin and Shopee came out, we all three stood there. And Shopee's like, yes, I have the video of her, like, I offered to go in and get the video and a computer so we could all watch where it is disconnected. It's not literally broke, it's not put together there, and it's exactly right across my driveway where they dug it all up to put the water lines in, Tiffany and Jason's. And that, and that means that one's the fourth one that they broke here in town when it happened, it's just, we weren't out there for how long? And I did have Tom Davis come out and blow my sewer line three times before I moved out, and he just kept saying, well, son, you're getting mud in there. I advised a camera, I was a single mom with three kids, can afford Shopee's camera to come down, it's pretty expensive. So this time, we're like, we're doing everything right, Shopee's putting his camera in, Shopee's like, it's not broke, it's not together. Right here, he showed me, he stood over.
We're gonna fix your sewer line, but I don't know about the tile. I don't know what it's, we gotta find out what else we're in. Were they, when they put the water in, that's the city's responsibility.
So they just, they were just testing it short, I feel like, I feel like they just wanted to take ten feet for, there's a hole going up through the ground, literally my whole armpit fit and...
Okay, is that under the...
No, no.
It's close to. It's close, no, it's close to it, about three feet out, four feet out, so it's diggable.
So do you remember where the...
They just stopped short.
Come down and we'll look at it.
Do you remember where the depth was? So when my kids were little, I used...
It's hard to explain it.
It's clearly...
They tell you unless you go, if you look at it.
Yeah, well, it's, if you...
Some of the state will look at it and we'll see what we can do.
Okay, it's clear, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh... Anything else for the... Any other, do this, that, and the other. There are motions to adjourn. Start it, all of the day we stay out, the files, needing adjournment.